I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 19th, 2025 Papillion City Council Meeting into order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday.
Here.
Mumgarth.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Glover.
Here.
Fanslaw.
Here.
Hoke.
Stube.
Here.
Engberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And do we have a copy of the Open Meetings Act that's posted on the back of the council chambers? Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And Ms. Power, we have a presentation tonight. Welcome.
Sorry.
No, no.
Last time I was late.
We have a light agenda, so don't worry.
Yes, sorry about that. Thank you for having me. I'm Lisa Sheef. I'm with Grosse ARPI. If it feels like I was just here, it's because I was in June, but we're trying to get on a little bit better schedule so that we're reporting information a little bit closer to the end of each quarter. So, happy to be here tonight and also happy to report that I'm able to share that we have a landed project and it happens to be in Papillion. It's the ARPI Campus for Metro. Excited to be able to have that underway. About 10 years, 10, 11 years in the making, and so excited to be able to see that really transform that corner there. We continue to open a number of new projects. It has been a little bit slower, but we continue to see project activity. We've seen some expansion projects occur as well. We've done some headquarter visits. We're also about 18 months into our three-year strategic plan, and so been able to go through and really accomplish a number of things under each of those pillars, and we're really proud of the work that we've continued to do and what we'll continue to do over the next 18 months throughout that plan. The other piece I wanted to share with you tonight was our construction kit program. The numbers of those have gone up from around 1,100 to almost just shy of 1,500 this year, so increased enrollment throughout the county. We've also added a couple of additional school districts that we give these to, so really proud of the work that the team has done to really continue to expand that program and to be able to get the construction kits out to -- we have 11 different schools, and we had 19 different sponsors that helped us put this together. We've really been working hard also on our community engagement, trying to get out more, doing more face-to-face conversations versus telephone calls and those kinds of things, really trying to build those relationships that we have. So, that's what I wanted to share with you tonight. You have the copy of our reports there. I take any questions that you might have for us.
Mr. Mumgarth.
I don't necessarily have any questions about your report or anything. I have a complaint.
Okay.
And I want your view of this complaint.
Okay.
About over two to three years ago, we approved a senior living facility at the northwest corner, basically, of 72nd and Cornhusker. So, yeah, right behind the Casey's there.
Okay.
Between the Casey's and the church. We approved it, but then COVID came, and that kind of fell apart, and they sold their land to another developer to do the same thing. Very, very good plan. And, you know, this is a type of facility that I think is just fantastic for that location. I mean, in my history here on the council, we had at least one developer come in, wanted to build apartment buildings there. We turned them down. So, at least for the last two to three years, the second developer with a really good plan, he's graded the location, and then it just sits there. And it is now being overgrown with weeds and kind of deteriorating. So, the staff, I questioned the staff, "What's going on? Why can't we push this?" And the explanation is, "Well, it's financing." That they just can't get the financing completed. You know, and I don't doubt that there's -- that might be true. And I'm just wondering if your experience, in your experience in trying to get people to come in and develop in Papillion and in Sarpy County, I mean, what should I make of that excuse that is just the financing?
Give me a second to think about the best way to answer your question. I think probably, I understand your frustration of someone coming in, purchasing the land, saying they have a proposal, think they have it ready to go, and then things don't come through. The commentary that I could add around that is that the cost to do business has drastically changed. And so, from their original idea to then execution, the costs may have drastically changed. We have seen a number of projects that originally came into our office that we're looking at, I'm going to say the entire region, I'm not going to single out just specifically Sarpy, but looking at the entire region, and they estimate the capital expenditures to be $100 million. Let's just use that as an example. Then the project comes back into our office maybe six months later, and now the cost estimates are up to 175 because the cost of doing business has drastically changed. Having not met with this particular individual to understand their situation, that would be my comments around that, is that the cost to do business has changed. I would like to think that if you are going to go out and purchase land for a particular development, that you would have thought through some of those pieces, but things can definitely, can definitely change.
You know, and I wouldn't, I want to be clear that, no, I don't think that the developers telling us a fib or just making excuses or anything. But the frustration of somebody coming in like that and saying, "I'm having something that, yes, I think this is going to be a huge benefit to the city of Papillion, and I'm eager, the neighborhood is eager to do it," and it doesn't happen. You sit there, and it sits there, and it sits there. I don't, I haven't come up with what the city can do. I think, well, I guess the city could just revoke their permit and say, "Get the heck out of here. You're no longer, you know, approved." But then somebody comes in with the apartment complexes, say, "No, that's not what I want. I want you in there." And so, I'm just expressing my frustration, and we hear about the great, you know, the development around, and there are, your maps and everything show us how there is great development that's occurring. And then I run into frustration from the neighbors to that area that this can't happen. And I'm hoping for some solution, and I can't come up with one. So, if you, if you could come up with a solution, let us know. Thank you very much.
I'll definitely try to brainstorm around that, and if something comes up, I'll communicate with city staff.
And, you know, and I just want to know anybody in the area who's listening to the city council meetings that, "Well, we're stuck between the rock and the hard place. It's the financing. We can't, we can't do anything about it, and that's where we're at." So, thank you.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I'd like to expand a little bit. I appreciate your comment, and I've heard that also from builders saying, "Hey, our costs have gone up significantly." You know, one of the other things, and Mr. Mumgarth kind of alluded to it, is what can the city do about it? You know, we hear complaints about, you know, regulations. What do you hear from prospective companies coming to this area? Do they have any comments with regard to regulations? Do they complain about that they're overregulated and it has an impact on their costs or their financing to be able to do a particular project?
I think Nebraska is pretty open for business, and when it comes to different regulations, I think past administration and current administration is really open to having a conversation with businesses to try to understand what may be barriers that they have there to try to overcome things. I don't think probably within the last couple of years I've had anyone express a real deterrence when it comes to regulations. I mean, obviously, there's, we have federal regulations and state regulations, and your own local regulations as well. So, I think city staff has also been very open to answering people's questions in the past and currently as it relates to questions about timelines, building permits, things that need to be done. And I think the other thing, too, is if you, you have guidelines in place with your planning and zoning, you have those things in place and approved. And so, I mean, people can do the research beforehand to be able to come in to understand that this is the expectation of us coming into this particular area, and so I haven't had any major complaints as regards to regulations. Now, you want to talk about tariffs? That's a completely different conversation.
Any other questions? Mr. Mumgarth.
You know, I just don't want to digress, but I'll build on that. You know, in the area of, quote, "Affordable housing," I read developers particularly complaining about, "Well, the city is costing, is making the cost go up of building because of our regulations, et cetera." And, of course, we've had this debate with the 10-foot setbacks and all that kind of stuff. I'm reading in the paper just today how a multiple-family development is occurring in Blair, Nebraska, up north, who has a severe housing problem. And I found it interesting that one of the city officials described that as, "Well, it may not be affordable housing, but it will be available housing." And I read that, and I thought, "Well, that's an interesting turn on phrase. I'm going to have to think about that. What does that mean, and does that answer the question?" So...
I think there's a difference of opinion when it, as it relates to affordable housing and the definition behind it. I like to use the phrase "accessible" because we're trying to make sure that stuff is accessible for everyone. We do have to make sure that we're building different neighborhoods in different areas and different price points so that way we can keep attracting a diverse audience to the county.
See, I've just admitted that I'm one of those old timers that still pay the exorbitant price of the Omaha World, Harold. How's that?
That's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there a motion? Oh, Ms. Powers' administrator's report, please.
Thank you. I have a couple of exciting land closings from last week that I want to update you all on. The city closed on the purchasing of the west portion of 433 East First Street, which we will be using for a trailhead connection to the Papio NRD Trail and potentially a B cycle station in Plaza to add to one of the entrances to our downtown area. And you'll recall that is the area west of where there used to be the Community Garden. The city also closed on the sale of the old public works site and the industrial land around, around it on Adams Street as part of the downtown redevelopment project with Urban Waters. And that has been, as you all know, a long process to get us to this point, and thank you to everyone who has made it possible. Several of you council members are serving on the LCR A Board, plus Michelle Andel has been instrumental in getting the project restarted over the past year and finally getting the project across the finish line on the city side. But thank you to everyone who has had a hand in that project. So, it was a big week last week for the city on that. Papio Bay is closed for the season. However, the Papillion Landing Pool underwent its annual cleaning and maintenance and is back open. So, we don't have Papio Bay, but we do have the Landing Pool. It's heated and operating better than it has before. So, thank you to the Sarpy YMCA and our partnership with them. We were able to use their pool while the Landing Pool was down, and they did, and they were able to use our pool while their pool was down for their annual maintenance as well. So, we do appreciate that partnership with them. So, hopefully, the memberships for both the YMCA and the city benefit with that partnership. Also, the Papillion Landing Hours will be returning to their regular non-summer extended hours after the Labor Day holiday, and you can go online for more information about those hours and their new group fitness schedules as they go back, as they transition from the summer season sadly to the fall/winter seasons. And we have, we had our quarterly MFO fire meeting today. The MFO is recommending the purchase of equipment that is consistent with their vehicle replacement plan, which has been included in the fiscal year '25-'26 budget. So, they did formally approve or recommend moving forward with that. They are also recommending to reimburse La Vista for the MFO's share of a new roof and HVAC system for Station Number Four, which, as you recall, Station Four is one of the two stations that's located in La Vista. And together for those two projects, it'd be $172,500, which, that's the MFO's share, which is 50%, and La Vista has the other half. And since the cost for those two projects, each one exceed $50,000, we will be in September bringing a resolution forward to the city council for you guys to approve that because the MFO agreement says any expenditure over $50,000 has to come to the separate governing bodies. So, we are doing that, we will be doing that in September to be consistent with that. There was also discussion about potentially amending the MFO agreement to increase that amount, since that amount was set, you know, several years ago when, when costs were much less. So, we did discuss looking at amending that and making other cleanup language. So, you may be seeing that in the future to clean up the MFO agreement. And then just a couple of final reminders. The final reminder that the Library Master Plan Survey closes this Friday, which is August 22nd. So, citizens, if you haven't yet, please go online at the city's website or stop by the library or the Landing. You can get paper copies to fill that out, or the online link. And non-library users, we really want to hear from you, too. We want to find out how to get you to be users, if you're not currently users. And then we have a couple of tentative upcoming city council meetings. Taylor will be sending out calendar invites. We have an FNA committee meeting on September 2nd to go through the master fee schedule review and then some potential recommendations for that. And then on September 16th, the Public Facilities Committee to go through the Library Public Survey Master Plan. And then the other four that are not on that committee, if you can hang out after the city council meeting and also go through the Library Master Plan as well, if you could pencil that in. And then just a final reminder that city hall and city offices will be closed on Monday, September 1st in observation of the Labor Day holiday. And I do want to wish all city employees a great and happy Labor Day with their family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Sunday.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
680 Ms.
Motion passes. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 2064, an ordinance to approve the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Is there a council member to introduce?
Introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Glover. Item D2, Ordinance 2065, an ordinance to approve fiscal year 2025-2026 management exempt salary ranges. Is there a council member to introduce?
Introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Gaines. Item E1, Ordinance 2063, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We had a fairly quick agenda tonight, so all the regular agenda items. Public Works Committee did meet. I don't remember who the chair is.
It's because you have a new chair.
Ah, Mr. Fanslow, welcome.
I think we had a little trouble finding out who the old, or the former chair was. So, yeah, so we met today. I was elected the chair. We discussed a number of things on our agenda. Two of the things were on the agenda, then we discussed something else on other business, and I'll get to that. So, the first order of business that we discussed was the potential for a unified trash hauler for the city of Papillion. And there's a lot of good conversation around it. We talked, we had an example of what the city of Bellevue uses, and we got that prior to the meeting, so some of, hopefully, most of us went through that or at least took a look at it. So, we talked about all the pros and cons of having, you know, one hauler or multiple haulers. It was noted that, you know, since, since I've been on council, we've had conversations about this every, maybe every year or so, and it was noted that, you know, we used to have multiple haulers, but we're basically down to two because of buyouts and acquisitions and stuff. So, we talked about that. We talked about if we went to a unified hauler, who would handle the billing, who would handle complaints? That factored into our discussion, obviously, and what we ultimately will recommend to the council. Talked about costs, the different cost parameters, if there could be a set cost, if it should go up annually. We talked about the difference in what some residents might be paying for their trash service compared to their neighbor who's using the same hauler. And so, we talked about all of that, and in the end, and we were basically talking about residential haulers, just so everybody knows. In the end, we took a vote, and the vote was 3-1 to stay with the status quo with the haulers that we currently have. So, we're not, we're not recommending to the full council that we do anything different with our trash service. The second item was a discussion centered around the second and Adams Restoration Street, the Street Restoration Project. We talked about the timeline for construction, which we were told was 2027. It's around $1.7 million. The result, so all of us are aware of our efforts to help with parking downtown, the appearance that there's a lack of parking. We've all been through those, at least those exhibits and those conversations. So, the nice thing about this project, it'll, it'll basically convert 28 parking stalls. The end result will be to 73 in that same geographical area, so again, providing for more parking downtown. We talked about bearing utilities now or in the future, so it, obviously, that would increase the price. So, we talked about some options of, you know, maybe putting the conduit in place and burying services in the future. It's being designed. We, I don't know, I don't think that was the final design that we saw, but, so, final design, I assume, still has to take place, and it still needs to go out for bid. There's a north-south alley that might be included in the bid, so overall, good project. Will add parking capacity to downtown, give people more options to park as our downtown becomes more popular, which is a good thing. And then, under other business, Councilman Stube brought up an issue that was brought to his attention and my attention about some of the home builders being assessed a fine of $500 for using water, I'll put it as un-metered, for, for stages of construction that don't necessarily need free water. So, so if staff told us that if they notice a builder or house is being built, and it's pretty far along, and, but the meter's not in yet, so we had a conversation about when the meter gets put in, when it's picked up. So, we had a good conversation about that $500 fine that has been assessed to some home builders. We were also told by Mr. Cleffner that probably shouldn't be many more of those, since they kind of went through and identified the ones that were in violation of city code, basically using the water without permission to a certain degree. So, we had a good conversation around that, and hopefully, that problem, it won't be an issue for the builders anymore, and we've kind of put it out there that, hey, this shouldn't happen. Ledgers have gone out, so we shouldn't see much more of it, so. And that's what we talked about, so thank you for letting me report.
Mr. Mumgarth.
I have a question about trash haulers.
Sure.
You have a three-of-one vote.
And that, that was a vote to make no recommendation of change?
Correct.
To keep trash service in the city of Papillion the way it is right now.
And what was the basic reason for that, our basis for that?
Well, again, the conversation had started a while ago when we had multiple haulers. We're really down to two haulers right now. And then it became, part of the conversation was, "How do you bill? How do you take complaints?" And some of our decision was based on the cost to the city to take complaints for, if we have one hauler. So, those were some of the reasons. We talked about the wear and tear on the streets a little bit. It was a concern of one council member, not so much for the other three. So, in the end, we just felt that the system we have in place is working, and, you know, we'll keep it in place, and people are free to, you know, make a choice.
Okay. What kind of views were expressed about the pricing? It's my understanding that our, generally, the prices you pay to a trash hauler here in Papillion is higher than people in Bellevue, for example, pay for the same trash hauler.
Well, I'll tell, I'll tell you that through the last handful of months and from a personal experience, there's a, people are paying a different fee for essentially the same trash service that their neighbor might be paying for. So, I don't know if it's, I guess I would chalk that up to, you know, being a good negotiator. If you call your service provider and threaten, or at least say, "Hey, I'm going to go to the other trash service that's here in town." So, there's a wide range of different prices that people are being charged.
Yeah.
And there's the, there's the MSRP, like we talked about in the committee. There's, here's our standard rate. And obviously, there's some citizens who are better at negotiating that rate than others.
Yeah, you know, I've experienced that. I've had constituents complain to me about that, that the trash haul, the primary trash hauler seems to be, "This is the rate unless you call and complain, and then we'll give you a deal, and then you end up paying less than your neighbor." Good, bad, otherwise, I, you know, I don't know, but... Well, okay, with the, with the recommendation to not do anything, not change, does that mean that there will be no ordinance drafted unless a council member wants to, or?
Unless a council.
How does that leave us?
Unless a council member would bring it forward. And then if you had desire of that, go ahead and work with staff, and we can coordinate that. But since there's no recommendation from committee, we won't bring one forward absent a council member doing it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? Mr. Glover.
I had a question when, when we were discussing the projects and some of them not moving along, some of them not doing anything. At what point do we ask a builder or an investor to show us that they have the money to pursue the project, that they're trying to do that? Do?
I'll look to Mr. Sturzma for probably what a common practice is, but I'll say, when a permit is filed for, we don't get a financial statement. So, but Mr. Sturzma, can you respond to him?
Yeah, now, on the development side, we certainly, as a city, are involved in the finances of the overall development. We have obligations to monitor, and in fact, your obligation is to approve the finances for an SID. On the building side, we, you know, we collect the permit, collect the fee, do the review, issue the permit, but we don't, we don't have authority necessarily to force construction or even review the finances of the builder or the applicant. Now, I think there is the example that was brought up earlier, and we've been exploring that one on the code enforcement side, and have concluded that when there are weeds and overgrowth and violations of that nature, we can indeed enforce that even if it is an active construction site. So, there are some things we can do from that perspective, but on the financial side, we really don't have any leverage on a builder. If they can't finance it, that's, you know, that's, that's their own doing.
I was just kind of wondering, because, you know, as money gets tight and, you know, you're paying seven, eight percent interest, I can see how a project can go south once you get it started. But this project that was discussed earlier, that thing's been set in for a long time, and you'd think somebody would at least let the city know whether, whether, you know, obviously, it's a financing problem, or they would, wouldn't have spent the money to do the grading and the roads. So, you would think somebody would step up and say, you know, "We're, we're going to abandon it," or "We're going to do something," you know?
And in this case, there has been some outreach, you know, in fact, from the mayor on to the owner, asking for updates. They've indicated on multiple occasions, "We're looking for financing. We expect activity a few months from now. A few months later, follow-up. You know, they're in the same position."
Yeah.
So, there has been communication. That's how we know that they're looking for financing.
I know there's not an answer to my question, but I, I just wondered if other cities are having the same problem, or if, if we, we just happened to hit a couple that, that...
Yeah, it's really difficult when it's a larger project like this. I think we're fortunate that it's at this point in construction, not in halfway through the building. That gets hard to recover from. We've had other instances with residential development where a developer, a developer has kind of left houses unfinished. That's a little bit easier to pick up the pieces with a new builder, but, you know, that's, that's the financial market we find ourselves in.
Yeah, and at least we don't have a building half-finished and... Yeah, and at least we don't have a building half-finished and sitting there and wondering what we're going to do with it. So...
Well, we are looking at it from the code enforcement side regarding the site.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
You bet. Mr. Fanslow? GM, to answer your question, it's pretty obvious. Yes, other cities are experiencing the same thing. Projects get entitled, so they go through planning commission in a city council and get approved. And then, financing, at least recently, has been more challenging than it has been in past years. So, yeah, some projects are, my experience, some projects are slower to come out of the ground, and sites are sitting maybe a little longer than they have in the past. And I think what we're seeing a little bit more of, too, on that is phasing of projects where they maybe were going to start on a large project, and then because of that very issue, they may break it into a couple of chunks and do it in phasing as well. Mr. Sunday?
I might sound like a broken record, but I'm going to bring this up yet again, and I'm not anti-business, believe me. But I've noticed a continuing problem of businesses and vendors of all kinds, including professional realtors, are routinely violating our city code against placing signs in a public roadway right-of-way. It's happening all over the city. It's happening right across the street from this courthouse right now. And I just want to bring it to the attention of city staff yet again because it's out of control, in my view. So...
Mr. Sturzma, do you want to comment on that? Because we've been doing some conversations internally about additional enforcement. And just for the public, code enforcement in some cities is an extremely proactive thing. The code enforcement actually resides in the police department. They go out and patrol and look for issues. Other cities, it's more reactive. Someone raises an issue, then it goes and gets investigated and worked on. Ours is the second model, and so we don't have as many people in there because we're not doing the extreme looking for issues, because they could probably look at every property in town and find an issue on the property. So there's a balance of then, how do we do that? But we've been having a lot of conversations internally. But Mr. Sturzma?
Yeah, and to that point, a lot of our code enforcement in Papillion is reactionary, meaning it's complaint-driven unless it's work without a permit or a life safety issue or something of that nature. And that's because we, you know, we don't want to go and police every little thing and create a, you know, an uncomfortable environment. We have moved that philosophy a little bit on the enforcement of signs. And we've gotten multiple departments involved in if they see a sign in the right-of-way, not just permission, but a directive to remove it. So we are being more proactive on that. We're also doing some more education on that front. You may have noticed one of the mayor's update videos, I'm talking about that. So we're being more proactive on the signage in the right-of-way.
And that's new since the council retrieved when you first raised it.
Yeah. And just for the public's sake, generally speaking, the area between the sidewalk on one side of the street to the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street is public right-of-way. So unless there's special permission, there is a, you know, a clause for public-type signage for special events on a limited nature, we don't allow any signage in the public right-of-way.
With that being said, if you do see a problem area, drop Mr. Sturzma a quick email, so that we can make sure we're addressing that. Mr. Stewie?
Yeah, I'd just like to maybe jump on that, too, because I agree with Mr. Sunday. There's no question about it, that we have, call it spam within the right-of-way, sign spam, whatever you call it. And I really like the idea about enabling others, city employees, to take on that role versus just focusing in and saying it's code enforcement. Because how many facilities do we have that you have employees going to a particular facility that see a sign that, like at Terra Hills Golf Course, that's 15 feet away from the driveway, and there's multiple employees that are going to that facility, they can just pick it up and throw it in the trash, unless you keep those signs at a certain location so that if somebody wants to pick up their sign, they can do that. But I like that idea.
Mr. Momburg?
Well, I'm going to be slightly on the other side of the discussion. Not that we're doing a discussion here, but if you want to have staff go out and pick up signs of commercial businesses, people who are advertising their business, trying to use the right-of-way to make a buck, fine. Leave the garage sale signs alone. This is garage sale season, and that's the public doing it. That's the citizens that are doing that. And I'd say, leave that alone. Thank you.
The only reason Mr. Momburg brings that up is because he's got one out right now. And as we, as we discuss this, don't forget that I've seen city signs up that are illegal, too. When we've had down in the park, when we've had the night where we had sales of goods that people brought in, there's a sign that was illegal for years. I don't know if it's still there now that we're redoing the park or not. But all I'm saying is if we're going to ramp up and go around and look for those signs, make sure you get them all.
I'll just say we're working to find a balance, and if you're aware of one that we're missing and you think it's wrong, make sure Mr. Sturzma is aware, and we'll jump on it. So appreciate that. It is a balance, and there's actually, there's Supreme Court issues around it, too, with First Amendment and being able to read content on a sign and can use that as a termination. So it is, it can get a little bit complicated depending on how you're looking at it. So appreciate the continued reminder.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear. I'm not, I don't want to make these decisions content-based at all. We have an ordinance on the books. If we don't want to enforce it, then let's get it off the books. That's my position.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Not much from the last couple of weeks. Been, as you know, we've got a new director at the Community Foundation, so I've been building a relationship with her, spent some time over at Papillion Landing, so she can understand that facility and maybe how it can be leveraged by the foundation and some things we can partner on. I think you've all been contacted about tours for the fire training facility or progress on the police station. Some have done that already. If you have not done it and you don't have one scheduled and you want one, reach out to Robin, and she can coordinate that for you. I think it's very good to see the police station and the progress, and then that fire training facility. So I appreciate that. The, just a reminder again, F&amp;A committee will have the next council meeting, and then we're into the budget season, so that'll be that. The second will be the budget hearing as well that we have every year. I think that's anything, everything. Any other council comments? Not? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
We are adjourned.